Down to the fact that everything matters now. Qualification and.
Right here.
The ranking. So, yeah, because you sure don't want to be on the short.
Yeah, that's cool. You have to travel. One.
Like, welcome everybody this evening to the Nevada Community Schools Board of Education Meeting, February 21st, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would seek approval of the agenda with the additions placed at the table tonight. Second motion and a second approve the agenda with the addition. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We have a meeting. Public comment. Again, no public comment. Let's move into our information portion. Got a board salute up here, Chad. Think you should come up and get your picture taken. Take a plaque home. Anybody else who's with the booster club?
And she's the secretary.
And I think she needs to be here. Board, if you could join us, this is, thank you, new funder. I don't know who gets this.
Yeah, you got Cooper in the room. You need his picture taken. Who takes more pictures?
Arrange as how you want to say this.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, boosters.
Thank you.
Yeah. Fair to say that I thank any boosters past or present appreciate all that they've done in regards to the facilities and all the consumables that they've helped us do. We wouldn't have got as far as we did had we not had them working with us. Well, that brings us to Mr. Cooper.
Yep. Thank you. Tonight, we have the Nevada FFA chapter program of activities. It's one of the leadership career development events that on February 9th, we took twenty some students from several areas over to sub-districts of West Marshall. They won first place gold. District competition is what Saturday, March 5th up at Belmont Clemmie. Our parliamentary procedure team will also be traveling up there and I'm working on a middle school ag CSI team, hopefully. So, uh, we're just having a lot of fun and I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Pichi and Sacker.
And I'm Jesse Kelly.
Kent's filling in for Chloe Peterson. I closed the musical practice. So, uh, what this is, this contest area is a compilation audit trail of photos and activities that the chapter participates in. It's a time event, maximum of twelve minutes. Then the judges have questions at the end of that. So if you have some hard questions for them, that'd be great practice for them as they approach district. Thank you.
Would like to present our Nevada FFA chapter program of activities. Our first category is growing leaders and our first subcategory is leadership. Each year, the members select six officers to lead our chapter. Our six officers attended chapter officer leadership training, also known as COL. There, they learned about specific officer responsibilities and further develop their leadership skills. Our chapter invested $1,240 to send nineteen members to ignite, amplify, and transform leadership conferences in November. We set seventeen freshman members to Green Hand Fire and eleven members to National Convention. At these events, they participated in activities to enhance their leadership skills. Many of our members participated in leadership contests, parliamentary procedure, parliamentary meetings, and chapter program of activities. Our party team advanced all the way to state and ended up with a silver award. Our next subcategory is healthy lifestyles. We grew watermelon seedlings in our greenhouse and then transferred them to walk swans and farms. After harvesting them, we provided the girls cross-country team with watermelon after practice, donated many to be used for school lunches, and donated over one hundred watermelons to our local food pantry. Our chapter created swag bags full of healthy snacks for our school state qualifying teams. This included our girls golf team, our girls soccer team, and our girls and boys track teams. Two students from our chapter went to the elementary school to present to classes about the production of eggs and why eggs are a important part of our diet. Our greenhouse hosts a variety of healthy foods such as pineapples, bananas, tomatoes, and spinach. Our next subcategory is scholarships. Nevada FFA granted $9,100 in scholarships to our eight graduating seniors. Due to COVID, we did not send members to Washington Leadership Conference. So, we were able to spend $5,780 on sending eleven members to National Convention in October. Thanks to this generous grant, these members only had to pay $125 to attend tours of a landfill, fish farm, and attend many educational workshops. Our next subcategory is personal growth. We had one student, myself, participate in the Iowa Youth Institute Conference and Global Youth Institute Conference. For these conferences, I had to compose a paper about problems around the world and I chose to do water sanitation and sanitation activities in Ethiopia. Two of our members received scholarships to the John Deere Tech Training Program. All tuition and books were paid for by Van Wohl. This year, we had three of our members earn their Iowa FFA degrees. Twenty of our members earned their chapter degrees and twenty-five members earned their grade ten degree. A freshman and senior earned the Star Grade Hand and Star Member Award for their accomplishments in our chapter. Members in our chapter have found success through showing livestock. These members have worked many hours with their animals and dedicated all of their spare time to taking care of them. The majority of all of our livestock warning members do not only show at the county fair, but also at the state fair. Our next subcategory is career success. Members of our chapter participated in five different career development events. Three members competed in the livestock judging contest at the state level. One of the members, Keegan Mallard, placed twenty-third highest individual. Nevada had a meets evaluation team compete at the state level. The team members ended up bringing home a seventh place. Three members competed in the state floriculture competition. The team brought home a silver medal in the event. We had one team compete in a state soils competition. They earned a silver as well. Thanks to our welding lab, our chapter was able to host the 2021 sub-district welding competition. We had a great turnout with sixteen people participating. Our next category is building communities and our next subcategory is environmental. As a chapter, we participate in no-till, conserve the soil on our test plot. To spread awareness about what we are doing and why no-till is a great thing for our environment, our chapter hosts a field day. We worked closely with Heartland Cooperative to accomplish this. We were able to bring in tents and trailers that were filled with informational stations and food that we served our guests. This field day was a huge success and farmers that attended learned a lot from it. Our chapter received a $700 grant from Farm Credit Services to expand our chapter orchard by planting four apple trees. Our next subcategory is human resources. Our chapter worked closely with our local food pantry and made a generous donation of over one hundred items. We arranged a hygiene supply drive. Our local pantry was in great need of these items and our members really pulled through and helped supply people need with these supplies. The agricultural classes at our school go on many educational field trips. One of these was a trip to Hollups to learn about ferns. Alums donated fifteen ferns to keep in our greenhouse. Our next subcategory is human resources. The beta FFA members and agriculture students removed over seven thousand square feet of sod in preparation for the Nevada Community Garden Project. Many of our members volunteered their weekend to help with this task. Members used a sod cutter to remove the sod to make room for the garden to be planted. Our chapter was state runner-up and honorable mention for the Iowa Character Awards. This is an award given to people or groups that demonstrate the six pillars of character. Many citizens in our area nominated us for this award after seeing all we do through our newspapers and our social media. After our annual fruit sale, we donated two hundred pounds of fruit that was not sold to the local food pantry and cabbies cover. To give back to our community, we host a winter dinner each year. Because of COVID, we decided to have a ground dinner. This meant that the citizens could eat in the safety of their own home. The meals were passed through an assembly line that would prepare the food and were later brought out to be given. Our next category is stakeholder engagement. Keith and Denise Davis donated $1,100 to purchase a digital camera and shot equipment. Availa Bank donated $500 that we used to purchase our Milwaukee Impact. Devon Jeff Hansen donated two thousand, no, $250 along with pork lines, t-shirts, and aprons. All these were used to help us put on our winter dinner. To help our ag business class understand the commodity markets, Key Cooperative donated one hundred bushels of corn and forty bushels of soybeans. The students read the markets and were responsible for deciding when to sell. Our tractors officers collaborated with Ruth McCabe, a conservationist and an agronomist from Heartland Cooperative, to put on a field day. They provided educational activities and guest speakers. The next subcategory is economic development. The Jensen Farms based out of Bondra, Iowa, donated pumpkins for our chapter each year. Twelve students traveled to the farm to pick the pumpkins. Along with pumpkins, we also grew and sold bugs. We combined the two sales and grossed over $3,000. Our chapter hosts an annual fruit sale. In this sale, the members go around the community selling fruit to help raise money for our tractor. Our chapter sold $29,700 worth of fruit that gave us a profit of $10,960. Our chapter is known for taking in old and used farming equipment, refurbishing, and reselling it. This has expanded into taking in bond mowers, snow blowers, and even boats. We benefit from doing this and this has greatly affected our financial standings. Each year, our agriculture class grows many different kinds of flowers in the wintertime. By the time spring rolls around, we are ready to sell our product. This sale always goes over well and we never have anything left over. Our chapter greeted and had dinner with sixteen of Mexico's largest grain buyers at Cows or Farms. Students and buyers had a very informational and educational conversation about Mexico's agriculture and what it's like to grow as an ag student in Iowa. Our next subcategory is support group. To show how much we appreciate our parents and donors, we invite them to our banquet to celebrate our accomplishments together from the U. At the banquet, we thank the parents and our donors with a complimentary dinner. A large group of students went and presented to our school board about what our chapter has been doing and why FFA is important to our school. A few of the main staples in the presentation were our recent fruit sales, national convention, ignite, amplify, transform, and the world we prize. Many community members help us maintain our test plot. Pioneer donated $2,850 worth of corn and beans. Steve Owen donated $1,880 in harvesting and trucking our crops. Our next subcategory is chapter recruitment. We had just recently started the discovery ag program. This program is made up of eighth grade students that are wanting a head start in FFA. This group of students goes on educational field trips and gets to listen to many different guest speakers. Many of these students have gotten even more involved in other ways, such as speaking to our school. Our chapter gives a discount to all of our one hundred and nineteen members on their jackets. After the discount, members only pay $25. This eliminates a hurdle for members that were unsure about being able to afford the materials they needed to be a member. Our next subcategory is safety. Three of our members put on a safety day for our discovery ag students. During this safety day, students learned about the importance of safety in the ag mechanics lab. Safety devices used in equipment such as rollover bars, and in case there ever was to be an accident, how to properly apply a tourniquet and how to give clear and precise directions to a nine-on-one dispatcher. We have many different safety posters displayed all over the ag met lab. These posters advocate for proper safety protocols such as how to wear safety glasses, when you need to be wearing protective jackets, and how the material should be stored when not in use. Our next subcategory is agriculture advocacy. Our parliamentary procedure team and chapter program of activities gave a presentation to our local Rotary Club. Our parley team demonstrated three different abilities and our POA gave their presentation. We then after had a Q and A with the members and talked about the importance of agriculture education in the classroom. During homecoming week, our school put on a parade. Every year, the FFA participates by creating a float and having members throw out candy. This year, our float was pulled by one of our tractors that a member restored. Six members greeted the director of the EPA, Michael Reigen, and the National Secretary of Ag, Thomas Vilasak. We talked about women in agriculture and what it's like to be a U. The Nevada FFA is very active on our social media and in our local newspapers. We have been a staple in the newspaper and our chapter is in there nearly every week. Along with physical media, we are very active on our social media and our chapter Instagram just reached 1,316 followers. To promote agriculture within our school and our chapter, we set up a staff breakfast. Our staff helps us in many ways, so we ordered a couple breakfast pizzas, donated fruit from our fruit sale, and brought in a variety of juices. This breakfast went over really well and received compliments days after. Our next subcategory is agricultural literacy. Students got to live in this cover crop seating in the standing court on our Rivas Lips Farm that is just south of Nevada. This was very educational to them because they got to learn about nutrients in the soil. Our discovery ag group went to Cows or Speed Lock to learn how an operation of this scale works. Many of our discovery students have not gotten to experience anything similar to a livestock operation of this sort. This was an extremely educational trip that taught our students a lot. Our agricultural classes teach students many things about the production of vegetables. They develop these skills by working in the greenhouse to grow fruit and other plants. Thank you for allowing us to share our chapter's program of activities. Do you guys have any questions?
This year, is that everything just from the square?
All of 2021.
It's one thing to. Call yourself leader and, you know, or to have someone else call you leader. What's my management feeling? What have you learned being leaders in all this?
Um, so one thing that I have done personally is I decided to expand my leadership by becoming a district officer. And by doing that, I have not only learned a lot about myself, but I've learned a lot about how other people interact and just experience the world because obviously I have only experienced from a perspective. And as a leader, you need to know how everyone operates and not just how you yourself operate and how that can help you just interact and contribute. So, that's one thing I really enjoyed about being a leader.
I think a big thing is confidence. Once you kind of get in a position where you have to speak out to people and like put yourself in a position where it's important that you're very precise and people understand you. I think it's important that you gain that confidence. They wouldn't have you to put yourself in a position.
Mr. Cooper, are you adding students to your programs?
I have three hundred thirty-five students right now signed up for ag class next year. Three hundred thirty-five. So, yeah, we, we, we're looking pretty good as far as numbers.
Sure.
It's not like that big number. Yes, it's good. It's good. And I really enjoy the opportunity for Mr. Snyder to be in the school. That Saturday morning thing has just been incredible. See those kids show up at eight o'clock on a Saturday ready to learn. It's just amazing. And then we've had Tuesday night sessions like three forty-five at five forty-five. Welding, soil evaluation, water testing, plant trees, engine fundamentals, troubleshooting, propagation of greenhouse Saturday, they're transporting tanks into the containers, the pots, four-inch containers. Show them the dose-tron, nutrients, all that stuff. Really good.
We can start seeing the evenings where your tractor restoration, where the doors are up, the lights are on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're into that right now. You know, I need to get parts. So, it's just an age getting parts, you know. Parts. Get one ready to sell one. They're pretty soon for that thirty-ten. That's five thousand dollars. Now, there's one David Laird, it's on the board, gets to go. And we pulled it out of his shed. It's looking pretty good, but the tank is rusty. So, you know, I've been trying to clean up that fuel tank. Today, I called whole factory, like, how much do I think diesel tank? Diesel tanks never rush, so tomorrow, a couple of boys are going down to get a diesel tank and put that on that thirty-ten. And then it'll be ready to go.
I know this speaks to tonight, but two weeks ago, the Storytelling Farmer Board ordered Ames FFA a thousand dollars. Yeah, and I know how you feel about funds, so if you want to reach out to your, the FFA advisor at Ames Schools as they're trying to get their club out of the ground and see if there's not something that you could put a touch on in regards to this chapter and with the Farm Bureau, I would highly encourage you.
Yeah, we just got six hundred from the Farm Bureau for conservation promotion with cover crops and so forth. But, yeah, Emily calls me all the time.
Okay, oh, good, because don't leave any stone unturned.
Right.
Paige, congratulations with mom. Whether you know it or not, later in the consent agenda, she's going to be, or Paige's mom's going to be her school nurse. But have her. I have a question. Are you guys, anybody there with the international group from Mexico?
I was not. I was not.
I was just going to ask you, if you were, how was, what was it like internet and interacting with international leaders in agriculture?
I think the students, that was after school one night and those students just thoroughly enjoyed that experience. I thought, first of all, you know, after school, it was all nice weather, asking to put in three and a half, four hours out there. We waited a while, but they really enjoyed that, the conversation of the grain brokers.
Yeah. They thought that would be very interesting.
It was. It was. It was. And to think about how much grain those guys buy and representation that evening. The kid dropped on the hanky. We got some pictures on the hanky and stuff like that. It's made fun, you know.
Cool.
Good stuff.
Anybody else got any questions? Appreciate your time. It's never a dull event and I'm just always amazed at how hard and how many things you get involved in. Mr. Cooper does a very good job of introducing you to a world that you'll see in some ways after the base schools. So, thank you.
Thank you for having us be on the agenda tonight. Thank you, Dr. Gray.
Well. Let's talk about the end phase in our middle school construction. We have new face tonight.
Yep. Gotta use that over there.
You get the podium.
Awesome. Uh, my name is Sam Pierce. I took over project manager role for Randy Sharp. Randy has officially retired, but moved on to be a professor over at UNI. So, he's teaching a wonderful construction management over at UNI. I have told the job, I said, I hope you teach it better than I. So, I take that personally. But anyways, I spent the past couple of weeks here trying to, in my head, fully wrap around everything. As you see, there's a schedule in front of you. This is a three-week look-ahead schedule that we usually use for subcontractors in the field with the amount of work that's going on. I didn't see a master schedule that they could use here, so. This schedule, you'll see that we're going to finish up that corridor next week or this week, excuse me. And so, they're supposed to show up today. I got a phone call this morning. Tomorrow, I told them if they don't show up, it's going to be some issues. So, we'll keep going from there. We'll keep pushing through. We are pretty much building up, trying to get as much as we can done before spring break. And then spring break is going to be our day or our week to go and that's going to be our main vestibule area or entrance, as you can say, where we're going to complete that area. One area, one thing I am worried about is your coiling doors. They are a little bit of a lead time and no one's committing to when they're showing up. I have been on the phone with the supplier, I mean, helping themselves. They just said this is just how it's going. They are, as of right now, they're tentative for spring break to be arriving, but something that I don't believe is going to happen. I've had issues somewhere else or in other schools as well. As for the financial report, Randy does his financial report a certain way. Trying to mess with it and trying to get it right. In my, I didn't want to put a false report in front of you guys that might mislead you somewhere else. So, luckily Randy's back from vacation and the plan on meeting tomorrow, I want to go over the report and give me a rundown of how it works. I will get that in front of Dr. Gray as soon as I can this week. And the following board meeting, we'll have a financial report. As for change orders, we can deep dive into them. I can give you a brief review or you guys might have already had a chance to review it all. If you have any questions, I know it's talking down.
Will we buy them?
We're getting there. As of right now, we have three more.
Looks like we're kind of getting low on funds.
Crocs is done. They gave back all their allowance as well. Change with the sink in the kitchen. That made up the rest of their allowance. The wrestling room duck. I guess I can just go with a rundown on all of them. First one I have on here is for April, change order number five. It is an ASI and they use the allowance on here. Questions on that one? The next one is for April as well. This one is to modify areas of where plumbing and ductwork, storm drains in the existing building. It was, had a lintel in that area. Allowance was used. And then there's another one to relocate the hose bid. Allowance was used on that one as well. And then we modified and changed several ceilings. That being in the kitchen, locker rooms, and the nurse's office. That paid up the, or was using the allowance as well. Uh, next one is April's change order eight. This one is a door hardware change, Curtis Mittles. So, this one has been kicked around for a while. I believe the majority of the door hardware that's on this change is already installed. This one came out. This one is not an allowance.
So, it's not an allowance. Is the school thing for that? Does that help me?
Correct. So, this is a door hardware changes. And yes, this will be a school expense.
Is this something we changed it?
A large portion of that, this were like the arm of the trigger training locks on the platform doors that were not initially a part of the bid. So, through discussion, the middle school administration, there was a desire to report that.
He's worthy.
Uh, the next one is the last change order for Croc, which is a hand sink in the kitchen. Part of this expense was used up or was covered with the rest of the allowance. But this one came out to be twenty-three hundred dollars and they cut into the tile or cut into the concrete floors and cut the tile and tie into the existing drain. Next one is for Van Monde. Van Monde five. They had to raise all the lights in the wrestling room above the joist and duct to protect the lights for the longevity of them. When you just find that bulb and other activities in there. This was used, the allowance was used for this one as well. And then they disconnected the dishwasher. they disconnected the dishwasher and commercial sink in kitchen. This was the lounge was used while I'm here. Then the very last one. Uh, there was several areas where projector outlets weren't called out in the ceiling. So we installed projector outlets. And lounge was used on those as well. And then an ASI thirty eight, which was about two ASIs ago, three ASIs ago. Account was added to your art room. And that is a contract change, which is an owner expense. Any questions on where we're at, where we're going, or any, uh, any of the change orders?
No, it's, we're clearly well past our hand chart. So we're dealing with this one. So we have hopes of being done in March.
Correct. So we have hopes of being done in March. We have the insurance work, which will happen in the summer. But otherwise I'm trying to get all contract work right and out done. And then I had been told last week that there's two more ASIs coming. Which will be like the same size since school's taking occupancy. So that is Dave, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe there we put in a utility heater inside a pump room. And then another, we're looking at different options of heating for the wrestling room. Because the wrestling room is hot enough. So is there anything else in those ASIs that I know?
Well, the wrestling room, we asked for that we could go from, you know, PE during the day or AD grades for wrestling at night. We don't have that ability, so I'm looking for the best effective way to get that done at this point. We got a plan and that will be the one aside. What was the second one?
Uh, the second one was the pump room where they thought the pumps would keep the room warm up.
Yeah.
Now we're, we're, it's too cold in there.
Yeah.
Well, I guess you can see the end from here tonight.
Yeah, we're getting there. We're getting there.
Pushing. Stay on those doors, you know, that is just one of those like you wouldn't think of all of it was done.
Yeah.
That would be what would be the last hole out.
Yep, I asked Randy on the phone today. How long ago did that smell for those doors come through? He said, it was kind of March. That's crazy. But I, generators, as you might know, is even worse. I got three jobs right now with generators just sitting around and they're ready to be closed out, but no generator.
We did things right at the front side, you know, buying a related warehouse of it. Well, Sam, welcome aboard. I hope that your time here, and I'll take this personally, is limited because that means it will be done.
Yep, I will try to make it as limited as possible.
All right, thank you. Well, I guess the main event due to achievement data.
Yes, doctor.
Take your way.
All right. So I shared some presentations and also updated total winter fast report. There are just a few changes here, just some things that have since been updated. And we'll note those are none too major, but just wanted to make sure you had the correct copy of the document. Okay, so we're taking a look here at our winter fast data kindergarten through eighth grade. Um, I've got our elementary principal, Chris Knight, elementary principal, Chad's Temple, and then our middle school principal, Tony Snyderman here. They're going to kind of chime in periodically with some updates as we go through the data. So first thing I want to do is, was share our long-term goals. Um, and this is what was submitted to the state through CCF in September, um, the start of the school year. Uh, so our first goal, uh, by the year two thousand twenty-two, eighty percent of students in grades K through six will be at or above benchmark. The fast assessments during the fall testing period, we're at seventy-four percent. Uh, this last winter period that went up to seventy-six percent. One thing that's unique for us is with the way that our data is submitted with our EK program. That's actually counted into our K through six data. So our EK students are assessed at the kindergarten level, uh, which is of course above where they're at. So if we were to remove our, our EK students and just go strictly our kindergarten through sixth grade, that percentage would actually be at seventy-eight. And it's also, it's actually closer to like seventy-eight point five, um, but just not high enough to, to round out. So we are moving in the right direction, um, which is a credit to our, not only our administrators, but also our staff as well for getting everything in place. And, and really digging in, um, into the data and making sure our kids are making improvements. Uh, our second goal was specific to our first through fourth graders. So in the winter of two thousand twenty-one. So it'd been winter of last school year, one year ago, seventy-four percent of our students in grades first through four were at or above benchmark on fast. Our goal was to raise that percentage to eighty percent by the winter, um, of twenty twenty-two. So current, uh, you can see we're at seventy-one percent in the fall and made a jump all the way up to seventy-seven percent. So, um, we're not quite at our eighty percent goal, but we are moving in the right direction. So did want to share that with you because that was kind of again what we're shooting for here. Uh, digging in specific to, to grade levels. Uh, so what I did here is I took data starting with the fall of two thousand twenty, um, and then just kind of went testing period by testing period. So of course our current kindergartners, uh, we're not in school at this time. And so that's why there's an NA for the fall of twenty twenty, winter of twenty-one, and then the spring of twenty-one. Um, but then our, our first graders, uh, you can see there are scores. That's actually their scores last year as kindergarten. So just kind of giving you a, a picture here of the last school year through to our current period. Uh, so our kindergartners, they started the year eighty percent, uh, the students proficient according to fast. Our recent benchmark score, that number actually did go down. Um, it was our only, uh, our only grade level, uh, in our elementary that actually the entire proficiency percentage uh, did happen to go down five percent. Um, might be a little alarming, but really in retrospect, looking at past years, other than last year, we've seen a very large decline from our fall to our winter at kindergarten. So although it is going down, the rate at which it's going down is being decreased. So with time, we're hoping with the implementation of, of literacy footprints in our different programs, utilization of our interventions, that fall to winter period will start to kind of see a spike and trend changing in that direction. Similar to what we're seeing in first grade. Um, again, this was a huge area of concern for us last year. You can take a look at the numbers. We're at seventy-one percent, uh, in the fall for our first graders when they started the school year with us. They ended at forty-eight percent. And I'll kind of talk about first grade statewide, um, just that being an area of concern, not only within the Bay County School District, but all districts across the state. Um, but those students, forty-eight percent proficient in the spring of two thousand twenty-one came back to us up to fifty-nine percent. And then did make a jump from the fall to the winter, uh, four percent, which is great to see. Digging into the numbers just a little bit deeper. Um, so again, our kindergarten data is taking our EK and our kindergarten students and assessing them on the kindergarten benchmark. If we were to break that down and take specific, their EK students, a hundred percent of them would be at benchmark at the preschool level. Unfortunately, that's not what gets reported and dictated back to us from the state. So the reason for pointing that out is they're actually quite where they should be. In fact, their entire grade is like what they should be at the preschool level. So that's a huge celebration for our, for our EK staff. Our kindergartners would be at, we just took kindergarten alone, um, they would be at eighty-three percent of at benchmark. And that's up from eighty-one percent in the fall. And a huge highlight for us is taking a look at growth, EK kindergarten first grade. Every single student in those grades made growth from their fall score to their winter score. That's a huge celebration for the staff. Taking a look at grades, uh, two through four. See green, which is great. So that means that from our fall to our winter, every single grade level made a proficiency benchmark. Class grade level percentage increase. Our second graders went from seventy percent to eighty percent. Our third graders went from eighty-one percent to eighty-seven percent. And that's a class of under ninety kids. So we're talking three or four maybe students in third grade that aren't at that benchmark proficiency, which is, which is great to see. Uh, forehead might be a little higher, I guess, maybe closer to eighty or nine, but still a, a great accomplishment for that, for that. Our fourth graders made a jump from seventy to seventy-six percent. Um, so totals there, ten percent jump, six percent go, and another six percent with our fourth graders. As far as growth goes, um, you can see ninety-four percent of second graders made at least a growth in their score. Ninety-three of third grade and then eighty-two for fourth. We'll move on to the next.
Now, our fourth graders, that eighty-two percent is a little bit low for what we would want for growth. But we also had a bar of the students that did make growth. Uh, almost all of them, I think all the four or five, uh, were already pretty far above benchmark. Uh, and so they did, they were already like anywhere from ten to twenty points above benchmark. Um, and so they either stayed the same or they might've gone down one, but they were still far above benchmark, but that, so that eighty-two percent growth. Want them all to show growth, but those that did, a, a majority of them pretty far above.
Uh, one new data point here to share, and this was tied directly to, uh, Central Elementary's building goal is focused on guided reading. Um, this is, there's one change in here from the original packet that, that was submitted. The second graders who just had some, some numbers that came in, um, last or since the four packets. It's printed out. Well, I sent it out Wednesday, but by the time that it was printed in the press here have made a change. So that actually flipped and turned all these to eight grade, um, which is great. We did have a red, uh, third grade actually, or excuse me, the second grade had gone down, but like I said, we made it here with that and fixed that. Um, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Temple, Mrs. Knight, just let them speak a little bit on guided reading, just to give you guys a better feel for what this is and what this is like.
So with guided reading and small construction, uh, it determines where, um, our students are at from standpoint of the skills that they need for the grade level that they're at. Um, you can see the leveling goals from the Jan Richardson resource of where kids are, could, kids should be in the fall, in the winter, in the spring. So those are our goals. Those are our guidelines. Those are our benchmarks. And we level, um, every single student in the fall to see what reading level that they are. It's like our baseline. And then in the winter time, uh, our teachers will officially level with the kids, students that are below that mid-year benchmark. And then in the springtime, we will level every single student again, um, to see where they finish, uh, the year. So that way we can track their growth from the fall all the way to the springtime. So you'll see just the growth numbers, um, from fall to winter of where students have, uh, how that, much they have grown in their reading levels. So the teachers always know where the students are at what levels, because that's where they meet with them at a small group. The level of books that they, um, are reading, but they officially level them all in the fall. Some in the winter and then we'll level every single student again in the spring. And so in our building goal, uh, is tied to that growth of where ninety-three, ninety-four plus percentage of our kids will be at that benchmark, that spring benchmark, um, or make a year's worth of growth. The resources and materials that are used with, with this for the each individual student, each individual group are the literacy footprint uh, materials that we purchased last year with that's for three funds. Um, so it's, it's nice to see those being implemented and a huge jump, um, taking place from the start of the school year to the midpoint here. Uh, we'll again share the state in the spring at the end of the year to see how many students, um, are at their expected level. And then also that may years worth of growth from where they were last year in the spring to where they're at this year. Uh, turn over to the, to the middle school. Um, again, the same table is generated here and, and again, we're taking a look at growth on the far right, percentage wise from the fall to the winter. Um, the fifth grade, you can see that it went down one percent. It's important to note that the actual students that were with us for the fall compared to the winter has gone up. So we have additional students in our district, in our fifth grade class. Um, those students that came in actually were all, uh, fortunately not proficient in the winter. So although our percentage went down, our total students here to take like cohort hits from fall to winter would actually go up. Um, so that's been kind of great to see. Um, hopefully with continued construction implementation, uh, from our fifth grade teachers, we can get that flipped, uh, into spring. Uh, some other highlights is that Simon had shared, digging a little bit deeper into the data. For the fifth grade fifteen out of sixteen below the fall benchmark show typical or above growth. So that means they're trending in the right direction. Um, sixth grade added three more students into the college pathway, which is kind of your high achieving group. The seventh grade, four of our top scored, four of our top scores in the building, um, were in that grade. And then for eighth grade, uh, thirteen, all thirteen of the students learning that had at least seven points of growth. And then eleven of thirteen had double digit growth. So the students that are in learning that that's where that intervention time takes place. Um, where they're assigned to that, um, due to their, due to their performance on the fast data. So that's great to see things moving in the right direction. Of course, we'd like to see a lot more green with that, but hopefully again, keeping things in, in perspective and continuing to implement the CSS structure. Um, that Mr. Snyderman said had in place for confident. That direction.
Taking a look, key six literacy comparison, so this is available for us on FAST, which gives us the opportunity to take a look at our students. Compared to all the other Harlan AA districts and then also all the other schools, school districts across the state of Iowa. So you can see we we made a two percent jump from seventy four to seventy six percent from the fall to the winter here. Seventy six percent is the highest that we've been at since the fall two thousand nineteen, and if you remember, that was pre-handout. So again, we're kind of making back that learning loss of people from proficiency standpoint and continuing to make that climb. Didn't want to share this, this is just part of our student achievement data report each year. Jumping here to math. Our, again, you're seeing green here, so our kindergarten first grade both made a jump, grade level, grade level percentage of benchmark proficiency. Some highlights that the EK students, again, they they were assessed only on the PK benchmark, a hundred percent of them would be. At proficient for our kindergartners, eighty five percent, we just broke them out and just had them specific eighty percent. At the benchmark, as far as growth goes, a hundred percent of our EK students, a hundred percent of our kindergarten, and then eighty percent of our first grade. Students made growth from the fall to the winter. We'll dig a little bit kind of deeper into this or talk more into this, talk about the key for math curriculum program. So we'll we'll come back to kind of those numbers and maybe some reasons we're seeing some of these. Like eighty percent in first grades, we'll dig a little bit deeper here a little later. Our second through fourth graders, again, second graders made a an increase as a grade level. Our third graders went down two percent, fourth graders up four percent, and then growth rates right around the mid eighties here across the board for second. Middle school, our our fifth grade went up one percent, our sixth grade down a couple percentages. Seventh grade up five, eighth grade up seven, and just kind of highlights of the numbers. Sixth grade cut the number of kids with flat growth in half, seventh grade, ten out of twelve students receiving intervention went from high risk to some risk. So they had moved up in in a category, so they're trending in the right direction. In eighth grade, high risk students from twelve down to seven, and seventeen students that were not proficient. Were one point away from being proficient, so when you throw that in seventeen students, that's going to make a huge jump on the fall. Those students can kind of continue on that trend. The biggest highlight is taking a look at our number of high risk students, and we have forty four students in the middle school that were labeled high risk. That number's down to four. So that's something you might not see, because those students would still be marked as not being proficient, but they're trending again in the right direction. And moving up the ladder. All right, so great, all this data is nice, but where are we, what are we focusing on now, or what are we using this data for in the spring? So from a literacy standpoint, district wide promoting a hundred percent growth in all grade levels, so every student is making growth. Increase in our our benchmark proficiencies in each grade level, so our goal is to have all greens when we come back in the spring to share their data. And then continuing to bridge the non-proficient gap, continuing to to lower that gap and make it that smaller. Central Elementary specific, looking at accelerated learning in kindergarten through third grade, so right now the the. There's a statewide literacy project that's taking place, the numbers that are on the left are statewide numbers of. Proficiency in in reading, so kindergarten seventy two percent of students in the state of Iowa are proficient. First grade is that really low number, fifty nine percent, the numbers to the right are 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 percentages. So you can see our our second, third grade, kind of, they're far off away from the state, our kindergarten first grade a little bit closer, so. First grade is really, again, a huge area across all districts, so we're really honing in on that group also. To make sure that that we're implementing things, taking things student-centered, personalized to each student to make sure that growth is taking place to raise that number. And then our our kind of final area of focus here for central is ninety percent meet grade level expectations or at least have one year of growth in reading. And that's what we're all shooting for. At the middle school, they're continuing with their NTSF structure, really honing in on tier one instruction across all grade levels. And then working for students that need it, for the intervention standpoint within learning labs, the diagnostics to to figure out specifically what is keeping the student. From meeting that proficiency number, so again, really honing in on individualized, personalized growth for each student. And running that diagnostic to figure out what's keeping them from from that taking place. As far as math goes, so you'll see a lot of kind of the same thing, so a hundred percent growth in all grade levels, increase in benchmark proficiencies. Continue to bridge that gap from, continue to bridge the non-proficient gap, focusing on our tier one instruction at at the elementary. And really trying to develop some building consistencies from an instructional standpoint and also an assessment standpoint. This is going to lead into the the PK through four math curriculum conversation, that's coming up next. And yeah, we're really kind of focusing in on that, that's kind of maybe been a red flag, that's popped up over the past two years. It's something that we really need to focus on, and we'll kind of explain that next. The middle school, again, working on focusing in on tier one instruction for all students. And then using our intervention diagnostics, which is Dreambox, which we purchased at the beginning of the year. Again, to really hone in on individual students to figure out what discrepancies are there, to be able to provide some interventions to continue to raise that towards. Benchmark operations. Oh, with that, any questions, comments for us related to our winter FAST data?
Yes, I'm always drawn to how we compare against the AA in the state, and knowing that the AA has some pretty impressive academic schools in it. So when we are consistently by grade gating them on, feel pretty about what we're doing.
Yeah.
Always good to see all that green too. I guess a question I have, when I looked at this here Friday, was you had a lot of answer dollars buying inventive. Interventive teaching, is that the result, are we looking at results of those dollars?
I would say so from three different areas, so area number, area number one is going to be from the literacy footprints. I think that's directly tied to the gains received in reading. For grades kindergarten through four, fifth grade is also using some of the kids for some interventions, which is great to see. And then also we created those intervention positions at the elementary and at the middle school. To kind of hone in again, and really hit on students that need the tier two and that tier three instructions, so I think those are directly tied to. And also, the individuals out here have done a great job scheduling, creating the schedule to be able to have the learning lab set up. To be able to have the intervention periods and time set up for the students who need the extra help to be able to get that.
You mentioned green boxes, is this the first year that you guys have been using it?
Yeah.
And have you been able to get different insights as what the students are needing compared to what you have.
Yeah, I think it's, oh, you can speak to it more in detail than I, because my conversation is just specifically from the person running it, but yeah, she. Mrs. England said, yeah, it's been great to be able to know exactly what is keeping the student. But, you know, that's limiting that or the the red flag. So yeah, it's it's been great for that. The whole school term parcel also being initially having. Has to be able to truly diagnose, so yeah, it's been good.
Yeah, it's just, it's a highly personalized program, so the teacher sets up. Like grade level, so if you take an eighth grader and say, we're going to start you in sixth grade standards. And then it backs that student up through units to complete activities, and they can move through it pretty quickly. But as soon as they start to struggle with something, it flags it to the teacher, so it's actually been really handy for students during study hall. During intervention time, during cup pride, to be working through it, and then for Mrs. England, who is our math lead strategist. To follow up with that student later and provide some additional instruction, just one-on-one with that to catch them back up. It's been really, I think that's a lot of why we went from forty four to fourteen, is because we're finding some of those gaps in some of the lower grade levels. Which might not, you know, if you're if you're a math teacher, you may not even know some of the fifth grade math standards. So having a program that can personalize that for an eighth grade student has been really helpful.
Anybody else? All right, I'm going to jump over to. Next year, eighth through four math curriculum. So we're in front of you tonight, just to kind of have a informative conversation, discussion maybe more so. Just about taking a look at our current math curriculum, PK through four, potentially exploring some some different options. To be able to better fit the needs of our students, so our our current curriculum, we really don't have a set curriculum. To be completely honest, teachers pull from various resources to create lessons, those are dictated by their their PLCs. Of course, those are all tied directly to standards, but there's really not a a set curriculum that each of our teachers have. That's consistent across the board, other than they're following Iowa course standards. So by doing so, that requires a lot of time outside of school hours from our teachers, and then also some inconsistency amongst grade levels. Self-paced math was was a program that we had in place that was in grades first and fourth, that's kind of switched that focus to non-essential standards. That, of course, has to be updated as there's troubleshooting issues that have taken place with that. And also, it's been a little bit difficult for our students to navigate, I guess, the students get older, it's a little bit easier or has been easier for them. But when you're talking six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds navigating on a personalized level with self-paced math. I think there was just some some red flags that maybe had popped up through that. Our assessment data, so this is taking a look at our FAST assessments, we've already kind of gone over the fall. Of two thousand twenty to the winter of two thousand twenty-two, but just wanted to kind of give a a quick glance there. The far right is taking the fall of two thousand nineteen, so that's pre-COVID, to the winter of two thousand twenty. And the reason I went to sixth grade is because our current sixth graders would have been fourth graders in two thousand nineteen. So I was prepared to keep that because they would have been students during that time, so although the green looks really good from fall to winter. We still got a lot of red on the other side, so we're still kind of working to get back to where we were in the fall of two thousand nineteen. If we're looking at ISAP data, now this is a little bit difficult to to analyze and look at. You'll see in the spring of two thousand seventeen and then the spring of two thousand eighteen, but remember that was not the ISAPS. That's when we were taking the Iowa assessment, so proficiencies are a little bit different, but during that time, I mean, we were always right around. The lower eighties or the upper seventies, lower eighties, since we've gone to the ISAPS, and again, we only have two assessment periods. But but the gap between there, it's like spring of two thousand nineteen, no assessments in the spring of two thousand twenty, and then again, assessments in the spring of two thousand. Twenty-one, you can take a look, we we took a huge dip in proficiency levels in the ISAPS from spring of two thousand nineteen to spring in two thousand twenty-one. Now, there's a lot of different factors that can be in place because of that, obviously COVID is a is a pretty big one. But one of the, I guess, positives for us is it's really given us an opportunity to dive into our curriculum, to our instruction, to figure out, okay. What is keeping our students from making the necessary gains, and this is one thing that kind of came from that. So our curriculum review process, kind of looking at what we wanted, we want to make sure that we have a consistent curriculum. That we're promoting mathematical thinkers, providing problems or creating problem-solving situations and problem solvers of our students. Something that's research-based and supports the implementation of effective mathematic teaching from teaching practices. I'll go over those a little bit later here, but that's kind of the what, what it is that we want. Can we look ourselves in the mirror and say that we currently have that? We really can, because of the reasons I indicated before. So the why, why do we want this? Again, we now have a common math curriculum. That is going across consistency on grade levels, that can be lesson structure, that can be pacing, alignment, assessment. Heavy literacy, we've been on a heavy literacy focus the past three years, and then kind of taking one subject at a time, didn't want to overwhelm our teachers. With literacy and math in one year, so maybe break it up into into two years. But really want to focus on developing a strong foundation and also making sure that we have the necessary training in place from a PD standpoint. So continued why, staff have appreciated the focus and curriculum guidance that's been around literacy. Kind of looking for something similar in that math area, so it's kind of been a a great bridge between admin. And also our teachers, something our teachers want, and then also something our admin had kind of popped up and thought it was necessary also, so. We didn't want this to be top-down, we didn't want this to be a decision that I made, we didn't want this to be a decision that Chris and Travis made, we wanted this to be an US. So we wanted to make sure we're involved in our faculty and staff, and hopefully be able to come to the same conclusion, which when we first started this. Seemed like that might be a little bit difficult, but as we progressed through this, it became very clear which direction we wanted to go, so. Because it's their folks, I'm going to turn it over to Chris and Travis and let them speak on the faculty, staff involvement component here.
Like Cody had said, that we really have tried to narrow our focus with. Professional development and building goals, since the last three years, we've really narrowed that focus around literacy. We haven't been discrediting that by any means, but with training and professional development, we really wanted to build a solid foundation around literacy. Instead of pop-corning around with trainings of multiple areas, we wanted to focus that solely on on literacy, which. I think we're seeing a pretty good payoff with the resources that we put in place there, and so we've gotten some. We had some questions from staff about are we going to look at math next, because they've really appreciated this this narrow focus as we built that foundation. And so our built team created a survey that we sent out to all of our teachers in the fall. And we were asking them about their personal math book, things they liked about it, things that they felt needed improvement. Strengths, areas for improvement in their math instruction, and over seventy percent came back. And said they would like something more consistent, some more guidance, something that would save them some time. Since right now they are collecting and growing up that work a lot in their own time, so. We asked our coaches to go to their PLCs and collect feedback and get, ask questions to bring back to our built team for more discussions. And then we asked Dr. Asmus to reach out to surrounding districts. To find out what curriculums that surrounding districts were using, the thoughts on those programs, we then brought. A pretty good-sized list back to our built team with a lot of detail to it, we gave them time to research. And have conversations with colleagues that they know and around those districts, we narrowed the list down to two. Those two were Bridges and Mathematics and Division Math. That being said, our work wasn't finished, we wanted to see these curriculums in action, so our instructional guide, Mrs. Haywood. Set up multiple observations for our built members to go out and see the curriculum in action. To have conversations, ask questions with teachers that are using the curriculums, things they like about it. Issues that they've had, concerns that they had, so forth, we brought those notes back to our built team for more conversations, weighed pros and cons. Before we felt like we were ready to go to a vote, and then after we voted, we didn't vote, after our built team members voted. They decided that, or came forward that Bridges and Mathematics was the direction that they would like to go with. In pursuing that curriculum.
The schools that we visited around here, Ballard and Roland Story, were the two schools, we went and visited Ballard. Roland Story also implements, we didn't visit Roland Story, but we had a lot of communication with their teachers, our instructional guides. Their curriculum people. And in looking at that, we chose those schools because they are fairly similar in size. They're also fairly similar in when when we look at our data, geographical data, our students. And we wanted to be able to make some comparisons with other schools that are that have similar students than we do. In in looking at that, so, you know, I think one of the draws for us in looking at. Looking at at going with the curriculum is with our self-paced math right now, there is no form of differentiation. That goes along with that, so our teachers are having to create all of their differentiation for, let's say, we have a student. that goes along with that. So our teachers are having to create all of their differentiation for, um, let's say we have a student who struggles with reading. When they go into that self-paced math curriculum, uh, they can't read very well. It's not very fair for them. The, the playing field isn't quite level, uh, as they are working through that self-paced math curriculum. Same thing with all the other differentiation materials that they have to find, that they are creating everything themselves. And, and having to find all of that. Bridges has that. It's, uh, it, it has a lot of components that we are already producing. There are, there's a part of it called number corner, which is a warm-up, much like what we, like what a lot of our teachers are doing, kind of a number talk. We also have been trained in CGI. A number of our teachers have been CGI trained, which is consciously guided instruction, which is mathematical thinking. Uh, it's not a curriculum, uh, but it's a, it's a how-to guide, kind of how, how to be mathematical thinkers. And Bridges supports that in a lot of the work that they do. They are also, Roland Story is also a big CGI school and they have said that there's a huge tie-in with that math, math thinking process in Bridges. And then Amy Carpenter is our AEA math consultant, and she also has a lot of knowledge about Bridges and will be able to provide some support for us. And there's a lot of higher education support as well.
Yeah, so they had indicated that I had contacted some local curriculum directors. So about, uh, probably just a shade of across the state of Iowa, uh, as many in Story County as possible. The only districts, well, first off, a lot of the communication back was, we're looking to make changes also, so don't really take too much of what we have to say. And then off in the next part was, let us know. But the only districts that said that they, what, the only districts that indicated they like what they're doing, we're gonna continue with the program they have with those that were using Bridges. So before any of this kind of started, that to me was that this might probably needs to be the path. So yeah, digging a little bit different, why Bridges? So staff support, um, first question was, what about self-paced math? What are some issues with self-paced math? Self-paced math is highly skill-based. It also, uh, creates situations where our students are lacking conceptual understanding of concepts. It also isn't, it's difficult to differentiate, as Chris indicated, from self-paced math. So that's why we're pivoting a little bit, you know, away from that. Um, the AEA supports Bridges. First mentioned Amy Carpenter, she's our AEA rep. She said, in talking to her, Bridges supports standards, teaching practices, and assessments. It's one of the few curriculum programs that does this. I contacted that department event, the individual I talked to, uh, I asked straight up, you were being, you were curriculum director at any district in the state of Iowa. What math program would you use? So she's paid to say illustrative math between us, okay, because that's what the D because it's a free resource. However, the PD for it is not free, so there's a little twist and turn. So she said, I, I first looked at illustrative math, said, okay, but if we're not using illustrative math, what would be the next one? Just that it's easy, Bridges, um, specifically. Another thing with illustrative is K-12, so that's why they're also pushing that. But in digging a little bit deeper, why would we do that? Well, the structure within the grade level work is also structured across grade levels, um, which is key. It also focuses on the big ideas of algebra readiness, the names and clusters of standards. Focuses on conceptual understanding, procedural skill, fluency, and then application of problems inside and outside of the classroom. So if you were to ask Amy Carpenter, what do we want our students to be able to have from a mathematical standpoint? She wouldn't nail those last three things, conceptual understanding, procedure and skill fluency, and then application. Being able to have balance across the board within that programs that offer, that are few and far between. Bridges is one that they recommended that we get and implement. Bridges also supports the implementation of effective mathematic, uh, teaching practices. So this comes directly from the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, um, this is from 2014. So these are the eight things that all effective math teaching practice, or all effective math teachers should have and should be implementing. They might think, okay, yeah, that's a teacher's standpoint, but if we don't have the resources to be able to assist them, to be able to provide these opportunities, we're doing ourselves at this service. Um, so those are establishing goals to focus on, implementing tasks, well, reasoning and problem solving, connect mathematical representations, facilitate meaningful discourse, poses purposeful questions, builds procedural fluency from conceptual understanding, um, productive struggle in learning, and then a list of use of evidence to, to focus in on student thinking. And this is kind of the cornerstone of what Bridges was developed by. This was, this document here, this site came from 2014. Bridges was created in 2015. Direct correspondence to those teaching practices and being able to curriculum program that allows teachers to be able to every words evaluates curriculum and resources in the following areas. You can see all of them that are there. They give each area, uh, one of three levels, does not meet expectation, partially meets expectation, or meets expectation. Bridges rated meets expectation in all areas and all grades. It's actually K through five, but I put K in four just because of this. So what I'm getting at is the data, um, also supports that Bridges is, is an effective tool to use. So hopefully that's checkbox number one for you. The next one, um, is the financial side. So what, what does it cost for us to be able to implement Bridges? So we were able to get one classroom kit for every classroom that has units, assessment guides, number corner, lesson and activities. It also has a number corner student workbook for each student that has an individual student workbook. Um, that kind of follows with the whole, whole group, uh, investigations, games, and then also a home connection student workbook that students are able to take home. Um, and then a, a packet of classroom games, activities, and manipulatives. All of that would be just a shade under 69,000 for us, um, a one-time purchase. Question number two is, what is our annual cost? So year two would be, uh, it can be anywhere from $2,000 to $10,000 simply based on me. You can print the wo, the workbooks or also virtually download them, um, or you can, I knew it was important. We would probably go on the print side and also maybe the virtual download. So that's why I have that at 2,000 to 10. We would probably be closer to that 2,000 side. So our annual cost after year one won't be, won't be too huge. That still leaves year one. So what are we gonna do about year one? So I, I worked it out with Bridges for them to be able to split that cost into two different fiscal years. So we would get one invoice on May 1st, fiscal year, uh, '22, $40,816.16. And we would get the second invoice for the second purchase, second part of the purchase on July 1st, to be able to pull from next year's budget. The annual cost, the two to 10, uh, we'll, we'll be able to cover that easily just with some savings from some different S or things that have been in place over the past couple of years. That still leaves 40,000. So if we can add 40,000, how are we gonna make that work? Well, recently Iowa e-learning central, um, department event, that's allowed districts to be able to supplement their campus purchases through e-learning central. Our campus purchase has been through S, so we could take our, we could take Canvas off of S and put it all through e-learning central and then take the 10,000 that we have floating around now from S and implement that into this purchase. So we can make a case to be able to show learning must be, um, because of the data I showed you, fall 2019, where we're at winter of '21. We've de-Quined from our benchmark provisions. So we would be fine reading this. So that leaves 30,000-ish dollars left. I knew this was coming last year when I first started talking to the building. We have enough, uh, in our curriculum now to be able to cover that for this year. I actually was projecting it to be 90,000. So we're a little bit ahead of the game with that amount. So overall, by being able to split the purchase into two fiscal years, taking that 10K from S or two, we'll be in fine shape to be able to cover this. Uh, our, our timeline, so after tonight's informational meeting, our next step is to take kind of the same presentation to our SIAT group on March 24th. Taking any feedback they might have, coming back with the staff at the elementary. Our plan would be to come back to the April 4th, uh, school board meeting as a board action item to make our purchase and implementation. Bridges at fall goes smoothly. Next kind of step would be then, uh, we would make our order. Um, I would make that order the very next day instead of taking our four to seven, four to eight dates available to get the materials. So we're hoping by mid-May or the end of the school year, all of our materials would arrive. We will have to devote two days of PD for our classroom teachers, uh, that's included. So there's no extra charge for that. That's Bridges coming in and leading PD on the implementation of Bridges with our K through four teachers. Um, and then June to August, teachers would have the time to become familiar with the materials. And then at the start of the school year, we would have full implementation, um, grades kindergarten through four with Bridges. That still leaves pre-K and EK. Um, and their time is just a little bit different because Bridges calls for over 90 minutes. 70 minutes of, of math time, and we don't have that built into our EK, pre-K schedule. However, with our order, we will be getting a pre-K kit for our pre-K and EK teachers to be able to review the materials, have that be their individual career development plan focus for next school year, um, as they've already kind of communicated as, as a desire. To then figure out and determine how can we take what we have, what Bridges offers, bring it together to be able to implement the following school year. Chris Travis, same thing. So that's a lot of information, a lot of background. Um, if there's any questions you might have for us to consider as we kind of continue on that timeline prior to coming back to you in April?
Give me an example of a family-friendly assignment is? Family, my family-friendly assignment is say your mom's, you know, the pressure.
So, um, I can't actually, uh,
thank you.
Bridges has a, a family support component that goes along with it. So there's a, instead of homework, uh, which is our, our teachers often typically send homework home in elementary school, um, but there's a family connection book is what it's called. And so, um, for example, when they are, one of the first grade lessons is on measurement. So they might measure things that are learning measurement, they're getting about learning about units of measure. So that family connection, um, piece that will go home, we'll ask them to, with their family, measure a variety of items at home, probably not your mom's waistline or things like that. But, uh, yeah, so there's a, there's a family connection piece that goes along.
Okay.
Are some of those books in like Spanish or other languages?
Yes.
Yep. Yes. So we have, um, yes, there are, that's one nice thing about this is we can get everything in English and in Spanish.
With no extra charge.
Which would be great because we do have a handful of families whose parents or caretakers do not speak English. And so this will help tremendously with them just being able to see in the loop what their kids are doing in school.
So self-paced math going away for through four?
It will, yes. So right now at the elementary, self-paced math is only non-essential standards. So they are not our essential standards. So, um, at each grade level, it is just the non-essential standards that they do, that they do self-paced math with. What we're finding this year especially has been pretty difficult. A lot of the links, a lot of the, um, lessons that were linked in that, those links are no longer valid or don't work anymore. And so there's been a lot of teachers having to go back and revisit it and find new links or find new resources or find new materials. Because when it was created, they were, they used those from a variety of places. And so, uh, if we were gonna stay with, with self-paced, we would have to completely revamp all of, all of our self-paced units.
My recollection is that there were, there were students who really benefited from the self-paced math. How, how did, how did those students get served by the new proposed curriculum?
I will find out. Um, we, you know, there's a, a piece of this that there's, it allows for both intensive support and then also for challenge, for, for kids to be challenged. So we'll see what that looks like. Right now, our, uh, a majority of our students for self-paced math are staying right with the teacher. We have a handful of kids that maybe go ahead of schedule, um, and do work ahead a little bit. But since they are non-essential standards, um, it, it, it really is a matter of just kind of that extra supplemental work that they're doing on their own. And Bridges will, we think Bridges will provide that same support. We will continue with a program that we use called STMA. That is something that all of our teachers use kindergarten through fourth grade, and that is, um, like self-paced math, um, it's almost a little bit better in the sense that it is completely individualized. So kids can work through, uh, it's a little penguin called Gigi, uh, but they can work through STMA at whatever rate that they're, wherever they're at, um, and work through. So as soon as a student finishes, say they're a second grader, as soon as they finish all of second grade, then we turn on the third grade, um, section for them. And we will continue doing STMA.
And differentiation will still take place within the classroom of math, just like we were saying earlier in classes. Enrichment, pull-out also, this is all very, we'll continue for students. Myself and Mr. Steinerman and Mrs. Greenberg will be back here in a month or so, um, talking about what self-paced math looks like in middle school. So we'll still have an accelerated path available for students. But it'll probably be a little bit more focused on the middle school side. So we don't have that situation where we're taking fourth graders, transporting them over to the fifth grade and have fifth grade math. Kind of everybody starting fresh in fifth grade and then providing a unique path, um, for all students, not just those identify this, that. But we're still kind of in the works with that.
For the districts that have been using Bridges that you guys have spoken to, what are they doing in the middle school?
Yeah, so they hodgepodge. Some are using envisioned, some are using illustrative math, um, some are creating their own, which is again, we're talking K four, the next conversation, of course, okay, what do you do in five? This one is just a little bit more solidified, um, but yeah, the same thing, we're, we're kind of looking at also. All of them would say, man, I wish Bridges would create a six through 12 program. So kind of a hodgepodge, yeah, of different ones. The, if we're using Bridges because of X, Y, and Z, it's a huge paragraph. It's four, that's six to eight, small, with a small description. So yeah, there's, again, I think districts are searching for that corporate program to fit, and we're doing the same thing at right now. We did explore our fifth grade math teacher. We did have that be part of the conversation with Bridges' math. And the 70-minute lesson was kind of the hang-up there with bringing Bridges into the fifth grade. Just because we run on a period schedule, which is 42 minutes. So it wasn't going to be possible with our current scheduling setup and staffing to be able to run 70-minute class periods of math. So yeah, we're trying to piece together and figure out, um, and even our self-paced curriculum has elements of like envision math in it. So when they developed that self-paced math curriculum, um, a few years ago, they, they looked around that research-based curriculum to make sure that they were coming in resources from those. But yep, so we're in the, in the middle of the process right now, trying to figure out what we want to make work in middle school. We're just a couple of weeks, months behind, still on that faculty, staff conversation, faculty, staff involvement. Like maybe Thursday after school, did I, the math thing? And I think part of it depends on like what elementary is going, we want to know, what's elementary going to have in place for those kids to be able to come up from middle school before we try and develop and respond to the students that will eventually get it.
So that, the, the 30% that don't support, or I don't want to say don't support it. You said that 70% were in favor, I don't know how to word that, the third, the remaining 30%. You know, why they expressed that concern?
It's actually 78% is what our percentage was. Um, it came up to four, uh, four staff members. Uh, and I think what they were hoping for was that we could completely revamp our, all of our self-paced math units and create self-paced math units, um, that would include all of our essential standards. And so, and in looking at that, that's just not feasible for us, just we're not, we don't create curriculum, we're not people writers. And so, um, I think that was the
And they also And they also gave a survey to all elementary teachers. So some of the people's opinion might not actually be digging in teaching kindergarten and fourth grade math. I have some specials or some other areas that might have different opinion. I thought theirs doesn't matter, right? But a little bit different perspective, you know, digging in and having to develop it as opposed to saying, oh yeah, you should do that. Creating.
And you said that it has elements CGI in it, but you have a slide that said proficiency too. Is that coming back to the times tables? And if so, can I send my three or at least two adult children back to them on that?
Yeah, that's one nice thing with Bridges is that it does have a mathematical thinking component, but it also has a strong system of fluency, the importance of numerical operations and fluency, kids need both.
Oh, to be determined. PD days in June, you can handle that. Tell me about those.
We'll hopefully have a better idea.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that, Joe. We actually got a discussion scheduled Wednesday, we're just looking at some options for that. We, we should have that figured out here probably in the next month. But whether that's using some of our DQ curriculum funds to bring those teachers in, whether that's bringing teachers in, kind of maybe it depends a little bit on how our school year finishes up. Hopefully we don't have more snow days or high days tomorrow morning's case. But that can have an impact on how we approach that. But also because we have two work-based lunch log days, if they approve the calendar, those could maybe come into play. So we just get a lot of things to factor in right now and see how we can try to capture everyone could be tricky, but that's our goal.
Trying to find some options too because of the timing, right? Not saying it's got to be June eighth or ninth, but June eighth or ninth or 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 two, just trying to get creative.
So that could be, that could be additional cost to implementing this program?
It could be potentially. We have the DQ funds available to do it, if that turns out to be the best option. So I wouldn't necessarily call it an additional expense because the funds are there, but it might not be the best option for all of the teachers either, so.
Regardless, we're not asking teachers to come in for two more days.
For you know.
Like on the, on the swapping the SRT, that's for funding, will that take board action then?
No, no.
No, the DE, we had previously the board, you know, indicated that we could use those SRT funds for that. But now the DE has given us a different option. They're just opening that back up and giving that to us. So those SRT funds will be sitting here, so our board then takes action to prove the bridges, you would know the part of that funding was made available through the, the switch in SRT to the Iowa E learning. Anybody else? Anything? I know. So we appreciate it. With that, with the bed, we'll revisit that as far as we're concerned, first part of April and take it from there. But let's turn to our action tonight and all yours, Doctor.
How do you say that now?
All right, so this is related to the Career Ready Iowa Plan. So it's mandated by Iowa Code and the Iowa Department that each school district submits their plan to the regional planning partnership or PPP. Each RPPP then is responsible for setting out, for setting its completion date for us. That has been set as March eleventh. So just kind of want to get ahead of the game with this and then get this in front of you prior to that submission day. Our, each year from here on out, the RPPs will collect and review career and academic plans and identify specific training needed for each district, whether it's from a professional development standpoint or just a kind of overall restructure of your I cap implementation. District plans are required to be reviewed annually by local school boards. I think the link was in to, in the agenda for the Department of Career and Academic Planning page. So you have that. When I submit this, the, or RPP will then take all of the submitted plans and then they have it into this huge folder, but all of us have access. So if I were to go and click right now, I can click on any district. None of the plans are in there because nobody submitted theirs yet. Hopefully ours is the first one tomorrow. But I'll be able to, we'll be able to take a look at all the different plans and kind of get some feedback, I guess, on some different areas. So this is a lengthy document. This was developed by our district team. So that consisted of our secondary principals and assistant principals, our secondary career and academic school counselors, our secondary CTE teachers, and then also Heidi Grimm joined us for health. And then Tanner, our, our new IJAG instructor, Scott Carter, joined us and then also myself. So we went through, we met three different times, went all the way through all the different things that we're doing from a career and ready standpoint. The, the three things that we have to kind of look at and discuss view as a board are reviewing our implementation goals. So our goal right now, it is pretty simple. You actually, so this is kind of unique, you actually don't have to submit a goal, but you do have to discuss it. If that makes any sense. But our goal can be, is found within our district plans statement summary. So essentially what we're trying to do is ensure that every single student in grades eight through twelve have the opportunity to sit down on an annual basis, go through their, their, their map, which is their my academic plan. Do that with a, with a faculty staff member, also have a conversation with their parent or guardian at home to assist with planning from a career standpoint, whether it's from post-secondary options, whether maybe it could be classes you want to take the following year, could be occupational conversations that take place. And then also making sure that we're providing as many opportunities as possible to our students to be prepared for life after high school. The way that we currently have that, I'm just going to kind of go through each of these and then if there's any questions you have through this, feel free to ask, because this, there's a lot of information here specific to each grade level and each different activity. So the major activities that we have, so each student in grades eight through twelve, complete the math annually. That's through Iowa State, that's my academic plan. They then, it's basically like a student interest. It then kind of shoots out different courses and career interest areas that students could possibly explore. An eighth grade students go over the results with their eighth grade club pride, club pride teacher, ninth through twelfth grade, they do it with their seminar teacher. Eighth graders have a high school course orientation where Mr. Baker comes in and goes over all the different courses and options for the middle school students to take. Through our CT career explorations at the, at the eighth grade level, we have health, FCS, and industrial tech. Mr. Cooper doesn't know this yet, but we are exploring some ag options. The difficult part for him is, as he said, he has over three hundred kids signed up for high school class. So how can we fit in an ag class into the middle school side of that? He actually came to us with that when I was principal, a couple of years ago. We just haven't been able to quite make it work. But when you're looking at this, it's, it's pretty clear that we need an ag aside within here. So I'm taking a look at some ways to maybe integrate that down the line. The students do have in grades nine through twelve, a career exploration opportunities in health, FCS, industrial tech and business. Actually, ag should be in there also here now that I'm, I'm looking at this. So that'll be one thing I will add through those areas. Well, add ag in all three of those CT, career exploration, career tours and guest speakers. They are down on the bottom part, this must have listed, I'm putting here, so I'll make that change before submitting it if you have that. But in those areas, we do have some career tours that students are able to partake in. We also have guest speakers that commit specific to each of those five areas. We have our, our course offering orientation where students have the opportunity to meet with teachers in a small group setting to go over all the different courses that are offered. The back of our course guide has a pathway for math, science, social studies, English, language arts, and then also each career, or excuse me, each CTE course as well to be able to see a path and course options. Students also have the opportunity during that time to meet directly one-on-one with the teacher that they want some more information on. They actually just, I think, went through that process last week. Then ninth through eleventh graders have a one-on-one scheduling meeting, whether it's with Mr. Einzweiler, Mr. Smith, or with our school counselor, Mr. Baker, and they actually go in after the master schedule is created and they pick all the courses that what they want to take. That's a great opportunity for our administrators and our, our school counselor to be able to have personalized conversation and encourage students to be able to kind of dive into some different pathways specific to their, to their math results. Starting next year, I believe, yeah, starting next year, we're going to begin to once again offer a career fair every other year at Nevada High School. So students will have two opportunities of that on the off year, excuse me, a college fair on the off year, we'll, we'll be doing a career fair. So next year, college fair, the following year, career fair, career fair, and then flipping every other year. So students will have two opportunities in each. Mr. Einzweiler would like to integrate all 10th graders to take a, a visit to DMAC. So to go to the DMAC Career Academy to be able to explore some different offerings that DMAC offers. As juniors, take everybody to University of Iowa State for college visits, really wanting in on the areas that are close to us and making sure that kids have those opportunities to sneak those out. We offer business internships for students in grades 10 through 12. That's been a great program where we'll be able to take our students, they partner with the local business and have an internship opportunity with the business employer, able to get credit. And more importantly, able to get some experience to be able to determine, is this a pathway I want to, to go down? Usually three different responses. Thank you for allowing me to do this, this has been great, I know this is what I want to do. Thank you for letting me do this. This isn't really my thing, but it might be something later on. Thank you for letting me do this. If I didn't do this, I would be exploring a major that I don't want to go into. Because of this experience, you just saved me three years of post-secondary education. So a win-win in all three areas. IJAG is new, and I think you've had some information on that. So that's available for 10th through 12th graders. We also have our register, our well-being registered apprenticeship program for 11th and 12th grade. And then our final thing, we have a one-on-one planning meeting every student has with our school counselor. As 11th graders, they start to kind of talk about fast funds and different college prep opportunities as they begin looking at their senior year. And then as seniors, we're going through and checking and making sure that all the classes are in the right areas and then also start discussing have you applied for colleges, scholarships? You're not going to school, how about some career opportunities? There are some internships I can set you up for that. And, and just trying to kind of go whole pathways for, for students through those one-on-one meetings. So the next pages, I believe, what, six through? Believe to the very end, it just kind of outlines each of these activities by each grade level. Makes a little bit deeper into some of the, the timeline, teacher counselor involvement, and also resources potentially that might be needed. Again, this is kind of our initial submission of this. We've always had this as a rough draft, but we've never had to really like submit it to anybody to get any feedback and get a sample approval. So it's actually a, a great thing for this to happen because this ensures what we're, what we're saying we're doing, we're actually doing. But then also gives us some feedback on some areas of potential growth that we might need as well. Then I'll make those changes and make sure what I cat left off there, but I'll add those on, on page four to the CTE career exploration, career tours, and also the guest speakers to make sure that it's updated. Probably get some more feedback here from our, our PPP once we submit it. And we passed it, I was kind of another thought, but we do the career fair alternating years, you said? Yeah. Is this that year that it's on or it's off? So next, so next year, we'll we'll do a college fair next year and then a career fair the following. Our career fair would be specific to Nevada High School. So just be us, we'll bring people in, kind of like we did, I think last year we did it, it's my first year as high school principal. I don't think we've done it since then. The college fair is actually a partnership with some area schools and each school hosts each year. Or every other year, sorry. So like it'll be in Nevada and then two years later it could be in Lowell store. Two years later, it'll be Gilbert, but we'll still take our students there. It's a little bit different when it's at a different site, right? Because now we're not, we don't have our students in the building to be able to go, it's more who would like to go. Right? So the nice thing about that is we've got the setup or will be at least one will be here each set. So we're basically hosting every other year. Thank you. Anybody else? It is our only action item, it needs brought to us each year. We have now done that and you have a few edits in the skill, so. And I'll submit it, these edits tomorrow. And then, yeah, if there's any feedback that comes afterwards, I'll be sure to bring it for next year's. Was a lot of material, I'm surprised you'll see all that there on Friday.
I will. We're waiting for a motion to that.
Every, every meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the Career Ready Iowa Plan presented by Dr. Asmus here tonight and in our board packet with one addition that Dr. Asmus. During this presentation.
Motion in a second to approve the Career Ready Iowa Plan as presented to us tonight. Any further comments? Or requests from administration? Are you none, all in favor?
I.
Host?
No.
Thank you. Consider agenda. Well, Dave, we heard from Estes. Got a little bit of enthusiasm there with Sam, young guy brings that, then they tend to. You got anything else to add with all that?
I hope we are going to be going on the right path to get this project finished up.
Do you believe that's a reasonable weekly chart to show that if we bring this to a conclusion? He said, I talked, I talked to him, but let me just preface it, he talked to me before the meeting, said they are, it worked out with the, the different entities, the ability to bring workers in, which has been kind of the problem area, but he had pretty firm belief that that was not going to be a problem here going forward.
Yeah, he's done a lot more in a short time, he's got all the staff, the progress of it before. I think we're on the right path, we're not through all of her.
But we do have some change orders yet to come, did I get that correctly?
Right, do we have any idea? I know we've talked about it, I mentioned the fact there will be dollars remaining out of what we bonded for, but do we have any idea seeing what we saw tonight and expect here going forward? What we saw tonight and can expect here going forward? Yeah, rough number. No, but I can provide for that number. I got that next week. Would like to see that because that turns into a middle school specific balance. Be nice to know what we have available.
That is something that I have asked for in a very concise, short version. What if he inherited, he's not ready for the joke of that presented.
He alluded to that. Well, good, we got him.
He heard the mess.
Good. Good to see the soccer club is paying for an overnight or the soccer program. You raise a lot of dollars. I hope that brings back some, brings back some tangibles for the soccer program. Well. There are no questions. Administration or any questions in regards to anything assumed intended that it is intentioned that is still. Prove it. Any additions?
Yep, those are at your seats. I know those earlier today and I have more additional reservations coming, so let's have your seat tonight.
Second. Motion second to approve the agenda with the aforementioned additions. All in favor?
I.
Host? Or remember comments?
Congratulations, Mr. Cooper. Golden, golden hour, that's called nomination. Very high honor, good to observe. Ben is not here tonight, but. I think that's where he is. Like the other night. Several of the students rushed in, Ben would be one of them, to the basketball game to say the national anthem. That was awesome. I know, I know, it's not the only time they did it. But my impression was they were rushing from play practice or something else like that. And just rushed in, they did it. Just performed. You got there. And then they dashed out to, I imagine, the next play practice. It was just quite moving because the way they did it. They really did the major. It adds a lot to the. Well. Anyone else? Just for us. Here's the thing, we talked about us. We do whatever best thing. Oh yeah, we did have, uh, state qualifier. This is seven. When was the last time we put a wrestler on the stand? So I told you, you should give up these.
I should not remember.
He is a senior. So he can go. Excellent.
His first loss will play this fall. Oh, potentially dangerous. Situation that must have resulted in an injury to the paw.
That bad, very severe injury. Sorry.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your observation.
Pretty good.
Yeah, he, he was on the stand too, wasn't he?
Yeah.
I did hear a positive comment from a community member regarding our action with the school calendar and the graduation.
Yeah, that was. And I did have a grandmother who was in attendance a week ago tonight of the, uh, basketball game. Student from another town. Really overachieving the acting out portion. That very pleased with how Dustin handled it. Start to finish, you know, while it ramped itself up to where the student was asked to leave. They, she grabbed me, I was out at the country club for another function and she came out of her way to tell me Dustin did a very good job and. For calendar. We blew it, I thought this meeting was going on our fifteen minutes. For calendar, we had a meeting here, one meeting in March, correct?
Yes.
So we're going to set the budget here coming up too. Nice to see the state of Iowa. Held themselves to it. So. Yeah. Don't do it too often, but they did it this year. So. Well. Anything for the good of the order? Seek a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Good night, everybody. Good meeting. Thanks for your time, Doctor. Dave, thanks for staying. Kevin, as always.
Thank you, guys.